I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please make the calling of the members.
Counselor V. Cooperrow. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Here.
And Counselor Judy Garcia.
Counselor Garcia informed me she's on her way. She's running a little late.
Right now you have eight members present in the hall.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. First out of our business, we have any public speaking? Anybody want to speak under the public? There's no memorials and celebratory resolutions, so we'll go to public speaking.
Public speaking. Anyone like to speak publicly today? Any public speaking? Go on once, go on twice. Next.
Okay, we'll go down to approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of September 26, 2022, City Council meeting.
Counselor Lopez.
Accept and file under suspension.
Thank you. Minister, accept and file under suspension by Counselor Lopez.
Okay.
Next communication.
Next communication. Notice of residency waiver intent. Pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I'm writing to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Benedette Rich of Sargus, Massachusetts for the position of payroll specialist in the Treasury Department and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code Part IV, Section 112.01. Ms. Rich previously worked at the Chelsea Police Department for more than 19 years and was highly regarded employee. A copy of Ms. Rich's resume is attached. According with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
What's the will of the council?
Accept and file under suspension if there are objections.
Thank you, Counselor. So, accept and file and suspension.
The next communication from the City Manager. Appointment to the Chelsea Cultural Council. Pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I bet that we just named the names and the boards and not the addresses and waived the rest of the reading beyond that. I just don't want the addresses to be said out loud.
Okay. No objections? We move forward. Just the name and the boards, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Alex Barker sell Chelsea to fill the remaining term of Catherine Cabral. And Mr. Sean Mahoney, Chelsea, to fill the remaining term of Juliana Borghiani-Gaiga, who has resigned.
I move to a, to adopt by, by roll call vote?
Counselor go to second reading.
Want to go to a second reading? Second reading for the.
Is this the first one? I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Are we sure? We did this?
Yes, we had one last week, but this is a different one.
Okay.
Okay. Suspension. Okay. The next communication from the City Manager. FY '23 park grant, Bossum Playground. I'm writing to you with an update of the city's park grant submission for the renovation of Bossum Playground and a request that the City Council approve the necessary funding for this project. Recently, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs notified the city that the Department of Housing and Community Development has secured a park grant for Bossum Playground pending execution of the state grant contract and fulfillment of all pre-forwarded program requirements for this grant.
Well, ask to waive the rest of the meeting, accept and file a communication.
Thank you.
There'll be something coming up on the new business.
The next communication from the City Manager. Fiscal year 2023 tax rates. Dear Council, I'm writing to request that the Chelsea City Council schedule a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference on Monday, November 7, 2022, or on a more convenient date soon thereafter for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2023 tax rates. Similar to past years, my goal at that meeting is to provide a PowerPoint presentation and then answer questions about FY '23 valuations and the tax rates. I also ask that the City Council schedule a public hearing with the Board of Assessors on Monday, November 21, 2022, for the purpose of voting on the minimum residential factor and setting of the tax rates for FY '23.
What's the will of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension and move to committee on conference.
And schedule a public hearing.
So, we also have to set a public hearing also.
Already been in the process. Next communication from the City Manager. Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for 88 Clinton Street. Dear Councilors, I'm writing to, to you with an update on the city's Land and Water Conservation Fund, the grant submission for the creation of a new public park at 88 Clinton Street and a request that the City Council approve the necessary funding for this project. You may recall that the city acquired this riverfront parcel abutting Mill Creek for open space purposes last year utilizing CPA funding.
Counselor Robinson, make a move to accept and file. Something's coming up in the new business.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Thank you.
That's it on City Manager communications.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication which was received from Shiva Watson Fisher Solicitor and Jeanette Centron White with regards to vacancy counselor-at-large member position. Want me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Dear Council President and members of the City of Chelsea City Council, on October 4, 2022, I received notice of resignation from Counselor-at-Large Roy Alex Avizaneda effective immediately. Pursuant to Section 2-4 of the City of Charter, the remaining counselors shall, not more than 30 days after the date on which that vacancy is declared to exist, act of filth vacancy. Furthermore, I review the ballots cast for Counselor-at-Large of the November 2, 2021 municipal election, and I have determined that the defeated candidate did not receive 30% of the total ballots cast for the seat being vacated. Please note that there are more than 100 days until the November 7, 2023 city election. Shiva Watson Fisher, the city solicitor, and I prepared to meet with the City Council as to discuss the next steps to review the rules and regulations that have been adopted in the past and the election results. Thank you for your time.
Counselor De Jesus, make a move to accept and file a communication under adoption.
And move to conference.
Move it to Subcommittee Conference.
Anyone like to speak on it?
Who's moving it to conference?
Counselor. Okay. They, did you ask for a move to conference?
Are you acknowledging me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Counselor Robinson.
Mr. President, can I?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. So, just so the public is aware, so we had a vacancy. Our City Counselor-at-Large, Roy Avizaneda, resigned, and so we have to appoint someone to fill his seat. And so, we're going to have a meeting to figure out how we're going to go about that process, to solicit letters of interest from the public as to who can fill that vacancy. The only requirement is that you are obviously a Chelsea resident, and because he was an at-large counselor, it would be you could live anywhere in the city in order to fill that seat. You would have to have been registered, a registered voter, on the day of the last election that we had in November of 2021. So, you would have had to been registered to vote in order to, to apply. And the other thing, it references here, there was a fourth candidate that had, ran for office, but in our city charter, it states that you have to receive 30% of the vote in order to automatically come in, and the city clerk deemed that that person did not meet that 30% threshold, which is why we need to go out into the public and make sure that we're asking folks who live here to apply to be part of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would like to, anyone else like to say something? Something's coming up later, so.
Okay. Want the next guy?
Yes, sir.
The next, anyone else? No?
No, no.
The next communication was received from City Clerk Jeanette Centron White with regards to the warrant for a state election to be held on November 8, 2022.
What's the will of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. There'll be some coming up on the new business.
For warrant for the election. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to second readings. We have one, let's see, one, two, three. Five orders, financial under second reading. First one introduced by Counselor Brown. An order transferring proceeds of reborrowing that are no longer needed to complete the project for which they were originally borrowed to pay cost of an alternative capital project as authorized by Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws. Order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the sum of $32,695 representing the unexpended portion of the $600,000.
Counsel. Can we leave the reading?
Well, don't you want to know what the amounts are?
So, we waive the reading, just read the amounts. It's second reading from last meeting.
Well, that, that last paragraph ordered is really the most important. Let me finish reading them.
Okay.
Okay. The portion of the $600,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2014 Capital Improvement Plan for fire vehicle acquisition, fire engine general obligation bond account, which balance remains after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized, which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of $32,695 for fire vehicle acquisition to the fiscal year 2023 Tower Ladder One account.
Will of the council? Counselor recognize, Counselor Leo? I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call on the adoption. Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Sure. Counselor V. Cooperrow.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Motion adopted. Under roll call.
Mr. President, is there any objection to grouping these together and just naming the, the amounts and where they're going and then voting on all of them together?
I have no objection, but I'd like the clerk to read the final line of it. There are.
That's right.
Four more.
Yeah.
Orders. Counselor Robinson, do you have any objection?
No, if you're asking for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
We ordered that $101,741 representing the unexpended portion of the $1,300,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2017 Capital Improvement Plan for fire vehicle acquisition ladder truck general obligation bond account. Roll call.
Yep.
Roll call on.
Adoption.
Yeah.
No problem.
You got to call the roll.
Counselor V. Cooperrow.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Present?
He said yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed. One absent, motion adopted.
Under.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, what I had asked was for us to vote on all of them together, and we're doing it individually. I mean, we could just name all.
So, I got it, Counselor.
Okay.
Apologize. So, she's just asking that if you could just read the three final lines here at the order. So, that's the first reading, yeah. Yeah, we got to take that one. Yeah, just the first. She wanted to do all three, so we don't have to call in between, so we just.
They're all different. They're all different sums.
Well, maybe we just read them.
They're all different sums.
Right.
Yeah, but.
The sum of $52,954 from the portion of $700,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2018 Capital Improvement Plan.
What's the will of the council? Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, one absent. The next order is $6,738 from the unexpected portion, unexpended portion of $625,000.
What's the will of the council? Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor V. Cooperrow.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, one absent.
That's financial order.
And the last one is the sum of $4,000 from the unexpended portion of $150,000.
I saw a roll call vote on the adoption.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. Those are all your second readings.
Moving on to new business.
First order on the new business, order introduced by Counselor Robinson, a request that a conference be held with Arthur de Mullis and his representatives in regards to 2005 memorandum of agreement as the city would like the property to be redeveloped. Chelsea prefers that a mixed use would include a residential component rather than a use that is wholly or partially retail and commercial be constructed on the property.
I'd ask for a, a roll call vote on the adoption. There's been an agreement since 2005 that they were going to look at developing their site, and pretty much nothing has taken place, other than a few months ago, they actually purchased a liquor license and are looking to build a store at the properties, but have still been unable to come in to this council and talk about what their plan is for the rest of their development.
Counselor Giovanni.
Here we have a paper, right? But can we really tell the mullahs what to do? Even if we adopt this, right? What is the outcome of us adopting this? I would like to be clarified, if it's through the chair from the City Manager, to explain to us, what is the outcome? If we vote this, right? What is the outcome? What can we actually do?
Well, Counselor Robinson is asking that we have a conference to discuss what we can do.
Right, but I understand.
So, he's only asking that this here.
I understand what he's asking, but even if we have a conference, I would like to be clarified.
But that's his request.
What can we, can we make these people do something? Can we say to them, this is what we want you to build? Can we force them?
By attending a conference, you can find out what we do, what Counselor Robinson would like the city to try to do. So, that's why we're, he's requesting a conference.
I understand.
Okay.
But, but my question is a simple one. Even if we have a conference, what would, what would the eventual outcome be? Could we make them do something? What if they say, we don't want to do anything? What is the outcome?
Counselor, we can't have the conversation back and forth from the floor.
But that's why we asked the City Manager through you. We asked the City Manager. Let him explain.
Counselor, do you have, are you finished?
Okay, okay, never mind, never mind. It's fine, I understand.
If I, if I can respond.
Mr.
I don't think that the Counselor is out of order by asking.
I didn't say he was out of order.
No, I'm saying, but I don't think he's wrong for asking the questions. So, if he's asking through the chair to clarify something for the City Manager, I don't see why we can't do that. Secondly, I just want to say to my, to my brother Counselor that it says something here about some type of agreement that existed. I don't know anything about that, so I'd be open to go into the Subcommittee on Conference to find out about it, because if there's a MOU or an understanding that is not being honored, then we absolutely should have that conversation, but I don't think that the City Counselor to my left is wrong for asking clarification from the City Manager.
Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Counselor Robinson, you have the floor.
All we're doing is sending a communication to go to the City Manager, and he will reach out to the mullahs requesting that they come before this body so we can have a discussion on whether or not they're going to move forward and do some development. Since 2005, they haven't done anything, and then just last year, they came, came up that they have a liquor license. They want to build a store right where we built the new train station, and all we're asking is for them to come in and tell us what their plan is. You know, by us just sitting back, we're losing tax revenue.
Just a moment, Counselor. Again, we can't back and forth.
I think that if you went to the source of that, the Counselor's requesting, then there wouldn't be a back and forth.
Well, if we have a conference, which is what the Counselor's asking, we can get all these questions answered.
Agreed, but the Counselor is also saying that he doesn't know if having a conference is even within our purview. We just want to clarify.
Well, he can vote no. That's, that's what he had before.
But if he has a point of, he has, he wants clarity. I don't understand why we're not.
So, Counselor, Counselor didn't ask for clarity. Counselor asked, what can we do as a body? That's what he stated, and at the end of the conversation, he stated that he wanted to ask the City Manager, just a bunch of stuff that the Counselor is saying.
I want to ask the City Manager a simple thing. What's my fellow Counselor is saying, to clarify, because here I see we have an agreement. We have, what is, what are we clarifying? We going to vote?
Counselors, Counselors, we could have that conversation. We could, I mean, it's something that's pretty simple. Either you vote yes to have the conference, or you vote no to, for the conference going. If you think I'm out of order.
Okay, I understand.
If you think I'm out of order, and if you want the City Manager to speak, I can have the City Manager to clarify your question. What's your question to the City Manager?
What was the agreement we had with the mullahs? What is their intentions? What, what did we ask the mullahs for them to do, to tell us? They, they came to us, and we had some type of agreement with them. What was the agreement we made with them? That was the question I want to ask. What is the agreement we made with them?
Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind, it's going into the conference now, it's something that we could have discussed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, it's been a while since I looked at that agreement, but I have read it a couple of times in the past. It was an agreement regarding their obligations back in the mid 2000s to develop that site. There's nothing in there that requires that they do anything further at this point. So, there's no, the city has no power, no authority over them to force them to develop the site in any way that they don't wish to do. On the contrary, there is nothing that prevents the Council from asking them voluntarily to come to a meeting to discuss their potential future plans for the site. They certainly, the, the city in my tenure has had a fair amount of conversations with them to try to prod them to develop, but has never had much luck in getting them to do anything.
That was very simple. That was it, right? Now, we understand. Thank you.
Counselor, you are. To amend the, the order, that to remove everything after regards, remove those two lines up until commercial, because if we don't have the right to ask anybody what to do on their land, but I'm okay with conversation.
Counselor Robinson, you're the motion, maker of the motion.
Well, part of asking for the conference is so that everybody would have a chance to get the, see the contract and see what it says in the contract, and all I'm at, these things that I mentioned are in the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Can I ask for a roll call vote on the adoption?
Okay. So, before we get that, there's a motion on the floor for an amendment. I'm just, what are you asking to amend, and were you interjecting something?
I think it should just be a conference to be held with Arthur de Mullis and his representatives in regards to commercial development being constructed on the property. I don't, I think we should disregard the entire MOU. Our City Manager just explained to us that there's nothing in there that requires them to do anything. We do not have the authority to tell anybody to build anything. So, I think, I mean, it's really, it's semantics, but at the end of the day, I just don't want us to be over here trying to flex our power as if though we can tell people what to do with their property.
Do you want to think how Chelsea prefers?
The two middle lines can be gone.
So, Counselor, I guess she's basically just saying she just wants to have the conference and discuss all the details that you have included. Is that okay with you, Counselor?
Well, I'll object to the amendment.
Object to the amendment?
I don't understand.
Do they understand what's going on?
Ladies, so, because we have an amendment, Counselor, the maker of the motion wants to object, so we have to have a roll call to, on the amendment, on the amendment?
On the amendment.
Counselor Taylor.
So, I understand the Counselor's, the reason why she's making the amendment. However, I, I, there was, there was a memorandum of agreement that did exist. They did say, yeah, we're going to agree to do this. Now, whether that's enforceable at this point, I, I don't, I don't think it is, but I don't think it's irrelevant. I think that that should be brought up in the discussions, and so, I'm going to vote against the amendment because I, I think that it's, I think that it's relevant that they had once upon a time agreed to develop, and they haven't really followed through on that, so we're kind of asking, okay, where do we go from here? That's all, and I think it's pretty simple, so I, I'll vote against the amendment.
Counselor De Jesus.
What would be the, I guess I'm just trying to understand, and I don't know if I can direct the question to my sister Counselor.
Through the chair, we'll get it clear.
Okay. So, what would be the risk of us putting it out as it is? I'm, I'm just a little lost.
I love it.
Legally, do we enter anything that's not?
There's not, but, you know, Counselors have the right to have amendments, and Counselors
have the right to object. To move forward, you have to have a vote to see which way we need to end this discussion.
In fairness, Mr. President, I don't think that we can presume that the city would like to develop a property, which is what the order implies. We have boards for that. This just feels odd. I just, okay, we can discuss the MOU, but it says that the city would like the property to be redeveloped. Chelsea prefers, who is Chelsea? Like, who are we talking about right now? It sounds like an opinion, and I, you know, I'm okay with conversation, but I, I just feel like we're completely out of order here.
So, on the floor, we have an amendment, and we have an objection. Okay.
From the city manager, through the chair. Was it the city's position in the memorandum of agreement that that's, that property was, that the city did want that property to be redeveloped? If that's the position of, if that was the position of the city of Chelsea in the 2005 memorandum of agreement, I think that that's, I think that that's clear what that means.
You know, I don't have the agreement in front of me, so I can't remember all its provisions, but my memory was that it really was focused on the obligations to develop what exists out there right now, and nothing beyond that.
That, that hasn't been developed up to this point.
Yeah.
So, so that it was indeed.
The direction that they requested back then, that's what that means.
So was, it was indeed the intention of the city back then to have that, or, or have de Moolahs develop that property?
I think there was an expectation, I think there was an expectation that there would be further development beyond what's there now. But I don't know, I can't recall if anything in the agreement reflected that.
Okay. And, and it's, it's not a contract, it's not a contract, it's just an, an agreement.
Counselor Garcia, Judith.
Mr. President, see, thank you, Mr. President. It seems like we're jumping into a conference right now.
That's right.
Can we just vote on the matter on hand? Roll call vote, yes vote, meaning we want to have this conference, no, meaning we don't want to have this conference. I think at the end of the day, we're going around in circles for a conference, where de Moolahs can come to us and say, we have absolutely no plans of developing, and that means we will have no conference. So can we move on to the matter that's on the floor and vote as it is present?
What, the vote? Okay.
Yeah, I'll remove the amendment, because this is complex.
So, it's going to Subcommittee. Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think he moved roll call.
Roll call vote, Mr. Clark.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Viga, mother absent, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
No.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Yes, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In favor, one opposed, one absent.
Okay, the order goes to conference.
Next order introduced by Counselor Brown. Now therefore be it ordered that pursuant to section two dash four of the charter of the city of Chelsea, the city council shall accept resumes and letters of interest from potential candidates for the seat vacated by Counselor Zaneta, and that all letters of interest and resumes be submitted on or before November 4th, 2022, to the city council office. That a Subcommittee on Conference be, to be held to interview the applicants.
Mr. Willard, the counsel?
Adopted shenanigans beyond the suspension.
Okay, anyone like to speak? Counselor Devoe?
Again, this is what I said earlier about the vacant seat and seeking applicants. I just don't know if we should require resumes, we don't give resumes. I don't know that it's necessarily relevant. I think a letter of intention or of interest would, would suffice. But just for the public, we're looking for an at-large seat, to fill an at-large seat that was formerly occupied by Counselor Roya Villaneda. You can live anywhere in the city, you just have to have been a registered voter at the time of our last elections in 2021.
Anyone else like to speak? If I may, can I speak from Counselor Taylor?
If we just want to, I hope this isn't nitpicking, but if we, if, 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 just to accept a friendly amendment to change the, the word "and" to "or", for, shall accept resumes or letters of interest?
Just you want to, and, instead of just resume, could be and or?
What do you want to add?
Just or, so, instead of just resumes, he wants to say and letters, that is for here.
Counselor, you want to state?
Want to read it the way you want it?
Yeah, just, starting with the, that pursuant to section two, four of the charter of the city of Chelsea, the city council shall accept resumes or letters of interest from potential candidates for the seat vacated by Counselor Avellaneda.
Okay. Great, thank you. So again, it's to fill a vacancy of the at-large seat. Again, we just want folks to know that this is something that the council is moving forward on, which hoping to receive those interests, that all those folks is interested in for this at-large seat by November 4th. So whether it's a letter, or resume, or however you want to present yourself to state that you're interested, please get it into the city council no later than November 4th. We will have a committee, we will set up the committee, and then we will put a process of how we move forward. So we're hoping that we would have this on our website, and also in the local papers, that anyone is interested, please feel free. Thank you.
All set?
Want to make sure that we're posting this in the newspaper, on social media? Want to make sure that we're, yeah?
Yeah, I just said it.
Oh, okay, didn't catch that.
The next order is introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas the city owns open space known as Blossom Playground, which is located at 50 Bellingham Street and documented as parcel ID 30 dash 23 on the city assessors map. And whereas Blossom Playground will be preserved as open space in perpetuity pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter 45 and 3, and article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. And will be re-audited, re-audited as evidence of the property's deed, which is catalogued on the book 3351 and page 443, 438 in the Suffolk Registry of Deeds. Whereas the priorities detailed in the city's 2017-2024 Open Space and Recreation Plan include the renovation of the city's most heavily-used recreational facilities, such as Blossom Playground, to provide active recreational opportunities for all ages, take advantage of the Chelsea's environment, cultural, and scenic resources. Whereas.
Where, Counselor? Go to the, to the last two, whereas.
The last two paragraphs.
Whereas.
To ensure the successful implantation of this and other park grant-funded projects, the fund appropriated through this order for the renovation for the Blossom Playground may be utilized for all Blossom Playground's projects' cost in the event that the construction costs exceed the estimated cost. And any surplus funds may be allotted toward future park grant fund open space improvements. Therefore, it is ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council endorses this project, the receipt of park grant funds appropriates the balance of the estimated total project cost of $1,450,000 from the General Stabilization Fund, Stabilization Fund designated Blossom Playground as open space park land in perpetuity, in accordance with the article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution and Mass. General Law, chapter 45 and 3, authorizes the city manager to utilize any surplus funds from the current and future park-funded improvements for the open space with the city of Chelsea. Certifies the city manager's authority to enter into agreement for the receipt of these funds, and directs the city manager to take any and all necessary action to accomplish the project.
Mr. Willard, the counsel, recognize Counselor Rob.
Can you change that blossom to blossom?
It's not blossom.
Yeah, I know. It's a typo, Counselor, thank you.
It's a typo, we'll fix it, yep.
Thank you, though, Counselor. Counselor Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, move to a second reading, there are no objections.
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson.
Okay, next order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas the city, this is with the 88 Clinton Street, a resolution to file and accept grants with, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office and Energy Environmental Affairs. Whereas the city of Chelsea has purchased a vacant parcel of 88 Clinton Street in order to convert it to the additional public open spaces city priority identified in the most recent Open Space and Recreation Plan.
To, to, Clark, from, from the state, they made a couple errors in, in what they sent to the city. So, and, uh, offer a friendly amendment, there are no objections. And the second whereas, it should be that the new park at 88 Clinton Street will be dedicated to both active and passive recreation. Take out "and" passive?
Well.
No, you want to remove "and" passive? It should be, it should read. To both active recreation, yeah, okay. Remove "and" passive? No, it shouldn't stay.
It says active and passive.
Right. We'll fix it. Go ahead. Yeah. Okay, and then in the, the following paragraph should read, whereas pursuant to Mass. General Law's 45.
Excuse me, Counselor, I'm sorry, we're trying to listen.
Section 3 in the Mass. General Law's chapter 44B, section 5, 88 Clinton Street, will be preserved as open space in perpetuity through a conservation restriction in accordance with the Community Preservation Act, requirements which shall be held by a third party to be determined by the city manager. You want to insert that paragraph? Yes. Okay. Let me just explain why maybe some of the counselors are confused. The state had sent the original one, and then they amended it, and it was too late to get it on a revised agenda. So we're offering it as amendments from here. Their new version, this is their writing, not us. Okay, you want to move that to a second reading? Move it to a second reading.
Okay, the next order is introduced by Counselor Robinson. It's a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Whereas the city of Chelsea has purchased a vacant, oh, this is the other one on Clinton Street.
That's the one.
That's the one, that's the amended version.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have an order introduced by Counselor Brown. Order that the Chelsea City Council approves the warrant for the state election to be held on November 8th, 2022 in the city of Chelsea.
Okay, Mr. Clark, if you can call.
Roll call, sure. This is for the warrant. Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Viga, mother not absent, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, now in favor, now opposed, one absent, we have an election.
November 8th.
The next order is introduced by Counselor Recupero and all members of the council. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby goes on record so as to recognize the month of October as Italian Heritage Month.
Mr. Willard, the counsel, Counselor Recupero?
Like to adopt under suspension, and I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
October is Italian Heritage Month. It's the same as Latin Heritage Month. It coincides together. That's because Italians are the original Latin people, the original ones. Even though they tried to deny that Italians are Latin people, they are the original Latin. All of us, which I'm of Latin descent, I'm European Latin, but I'm Latin. I'm no different than any other Latin person. But also, the Italians have contributed a lot to this nation. One, they contributed for many generation immigrants. They suffered and went through all the pain to build this country. They were very much discriminated against. For many years, they were considered to be low-class citizens. And in some places, they weren't even considered to be white people. It's on record, the, the US Congress once said, "We have a new breed of immigrants that are entering our nation. They're not black, but they're certainly not white, they're called "other." And they didn't even get equal rights until 1964. That's when they got the Equal Rights Amendment. So, as far as, that's only one part, but they contributed so much to our nation and to the world. They contributed to science, they had great scientists, they had great explorers. Amorico Vespucci was one of them, John Cabot was another. You had scientists like Enrico Fermi, who split the atom in half. From him, you get atomic energy. And you have the Marconi invented the first wireless radio. Then you have a gentleman named Alexandra Volta, which invented the portable battery, which Volts are named after. That's just a few. Then, they had a distinct effect on mankind in three different ways. One, they headed to the Roman Empire, which gave you roads and naval maneuvers and paid soldiers. The next was the Renaissance, which gave you the first university in the world, which taught people how to go to school. Not only that, they also had great scientists back then. You had Da Vinci, and you had great artists, a whole bunch of them, Michelangelo was another. And after that, you had the second part of the century, of this century, where you had the great Italian inventors. But that's just some parts of it. The greatest achievement Italians had to our nation was themselves. They themselves, immigrants from another world, came to this nation and contributed, just like every other immigrant that has come to this nation. And for that particular reason, they should be recognized, just like we recognize everybody else, for the accomplishment that they came to a nation far away, thousands and thousands of miles away. And yet, proceed, they became part of this culture, they became part of our nation. And they might not get the respect that they deserve, because they do, should get more respect than whoever they are. But the only reason why, because they are of Latin descent. If they weren't of Latin descent, they would have got, huh? Okay. If they weren't of Latin descent, they would have got more, much more than they, because they have contributed a bunch, just like the new breed of immigrants that we have today. One day, they will be the same way, they're contributing just as much as the Italians have. All the people that have come to this nation have contributed to this great, have made this great country. So for that purpose, I would like to thank my ancestors for making people like me and understanding that we are all equal. All of us are equal, there's nobody different than nobody else. Every immigrant that came to this country has paid us dues, that's all it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to speak on the resolution? Thank you, Counselor Vido.
You made all those, I'm sorry, that he made all those accomplishments about the Italian culture, and there was no mention of pasta. So I just want to make sure that we added that, because the Italians created my favorite food. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, so, any announcements? Any announcements? Counselor Vido.
I want to announce that on November 4th, Friday, November 4th, at MGH Chelsea Health Center, there will be a gathering to honor Dr. Eduardo Budge, who was a doctor at MGH for like over twen, for over 20 years. He served hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of family. He was a community guy that really just showed up for everybody, showed up to everything. People absolutely adored him. He was, for many years, he was one of the only Spanish-speaking doctors at MGH Center when it was up on the hill. And he died tragically, he had a heart attack when he was visiting his hometown of Peru. And so they're having a memorial for him on Friday, November 4th, from 2:30 to 4:00 at the Chelsea Health Center. I'll be introducing a resolution next week that we can provide to his family, and I'm hoping that all counselors sign, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that will be happening, and hopefully, you all can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd be honored to sign, local neighbor up in Chelsea, Admirals Hill.
Public announcement that I have is that Central Ave at the bottom is closed. And you cannot go to Eastern Ave to Central Avenue. So there's a big billboard at the end of Highland that tells you that you cannot take turns and to go there, because if you do, you're going to get blocked off. The only way you can go to Eastern Avenue now is to go to Marginal Street. Don't use Central Avenue as an artery to go there, because you cannot, it's closed at the bottom. And if you try to deviate and go through Maverick Street to Congress or to Willow, you will be stopped at the end of Willow. You won't be able to go to Eastern Ave that way. You will have to go back, turn around, and go through Marginal Street. So to anybody that's trying to go to Eastern Avenue, through Central Avenue, do not go at the end towards, get, the exit you have to get off is Highland. Get off at Highland, and they'll take you straight to Marginal Street. If you go any other way, you won't be able to go, so. And there's a big billboard that will tell you that, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else like to speak, announcement? Just one more announcement before moments of silence, we have, Counselor.
Chelsea Chambers' annual fundraiser is October 26th. It's a $10,000 drawing that will be held that night. It's called the Pot of Gold. And actually, November 11th, which will be Veterans Day, the commander from the female, the female person from the US Constitution will be the keynote speaker. Yes, and the event will be held at the senior center. And thanks, Counselor Recupero, for pitching in.
Thank you. May I speak from the floor? Announcement, thank you. So I just want, again, to the residents out there, we've had a lot of work done over the summer, particularly up in Admirals Hill, Williams, Spruiski, and I'm particularly talking about the street lighting. So I want to thank Alex Train and his team for doing a wonderful job and going down Beetum Street. But most importantly, I just want to ask us to have a little more patience. The lights are kind of tricky, it's going to take time for your patience. We're going to ask you for your patience to get there, especially coming across Williams Second going towards Route 1. We want you to be very careful, school kids are there, school's back in, everyone's trying to get from place. School kids are there, schools back in, everyone's trying to get from place A to B. There's streetlights to turn right, turn left, you have to wait. I know there's sometimes congestion going up to the Tobin Bridge, but in the long run, we've improved our street lighting, we've improved our sidewalks, our handicap accessibility to the curves, but most importantly, now we need to improve on our patience in crossing the roads on the red light. Every time we go up to Admiral's Hill and in front of Williams Street by the courthouse, you're always seeing these cars dotting across right when the light turns red. And I know we're in, you know, a hurry, but we have to use our discretion, our patience, and make sure that we don't hurt anyone. So, all this great work has been done for the city of Chelsea, but we need you to be patient also trying to get by. Thank you. Anyone have any moments of silence? We'll speak, okay?
Moments of silence for people that have passed, but I have a friend that's in the hospital fighting for her life, and I know Counselor Lopez has a family member, and I just want to make sure that we keep them in our memories when we're acknowledging folks that have passed as well.
Thank you, counselor, for sharing that. Counselors on, yes?
Anthony Quillie's mom passed away. Anthony used to be one of the building inspectors here for the city. His mother was a pastor at the church down on Broadway, so we'd have a moment of silence.
Counselor Recupero, you have a moment? You had your answer?
Yes, for my uncle Sal. Sal Rizzo, he just died, he just died, so for him too.
Anyone else have a moment of silence? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.